Good evening. This is Mary De Porcy, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, April 6, 2022. This meeting with the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees is being conducted with hybrid accommodations in order to allow members of the community to join remotely. Consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location due to the COVID-19 virus. The agenda that includes the link, the telephone number, and access codes for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Monday, April 4, 2022. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Toth?
Present.
Suzette Dowd? Jennifer Shea? Erica Briesaker?
Yes.
John Danilowicz?
Present.
And I am present. There are four of us present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins, Library Director?
Present.
Great, thank you. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. May I have a motion? Oh, sorry. We'll begin the meeting. Sorry, I'm getting confused with the feedback. So we're going to turn to the first item on the agenda. I had the meeting notes as an agenda item, but I don't have those tonight, so I'll bring them to our next meeting on May 4. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report.
Okay, so there's kind of a lot, but I'll go through it a little quickly and get a lot on your agenda. Just some updates on the facility. Name one is we just had the outside ramp painted, the safety paint, and we also had the concrete sort of filed down because coming up the ramp, they would develop a lip, a sort of a lid, because it probably sunk down. And that was a little bit of a handicap issue. So they came and sanded that down, and we'll also put some paint on there too once it dries. The foyer, I do have the Bulletin Board Policy draft that I attached.
Did you turn off? Put the mute on, please. Put the mute back on.
The mute's on.
Yeah, sorry, Jean.
The mute is off, right?
It is completely off. My understanding is one of the microphones are picking up but not here. He said up there. Do you want me to try muting and unmuting and muting again?
Yeah, she said it is muted.
It's muted.
Yep, I turned that way down. And I turned that number two way down.
How about now?
Can I try now?
Two. And I've turned that way down.
I don't know if that way is muted.
Oh, shit.
Whoops, Alice? Can you, am I picking up, being picked up by the mic now? Can you hear me? I guess I'm, am I broadcasting? Because John turned it down.
I turned off the speaker on the laptop, but I didn't touch the mic on the laptop.
Please, if you can hear it on the thing. Hold on.
Alice, can you hear me okay?
No.
No? I mean, the only thing he did is he turned down my speakers. Can you hear me now?
Well, you're muted. See if you unmute yourself.
So, yeah.
Well, there we go.
Can you hear me now? No? Well, Chris told me to leave it on.
Leave it on.
The only thing. You turned the feedback. Oh, hi, Jean. How about now, Alice? Getting feedback.
Yeah.
That's what you've been so far.
We're still getting the feedback.
Not the good time to feed back.
Right acting on guitar. If I have my guitar too close to my amp.
Turn the speaker off on the laptop.
Done.
It's done.
It's done, it's off.
This one's better now. I mean, this isn't.
Yeah, let's try.
It's just echoing.
Okay, sorry, Jean. I'm welcome.
Okay, I think they're going to try it.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Well, I know you guys.
Yep, I did.
Here, fun. Okay, here we go.
It's not red though. It's just a little bit blurring me a little.
Yeah, you can proceed.
So the Bulletin Board Policy, it's just the draft, the first draft. I think it's pretty concise. You know, once I take down the, take off the watermark, it'll be one page. You don't want anything like that to be more than one page.
Yes, I can hear.
But once I reform that, it'll be one page. So you can take a look at that and see if there's any adjustments that you want to make.
No, not right now.
That is a board authority level to vote on. So hours of operation, we are, we have been tracking Thursday, 7 to 8 PM. Out of the last 12 weeks, we've had .5 people. So again, there is no reason to extend beyond 7 o'clock. And the MBLC recently relaxed the hours open requirement again. And so there's still a continuous moratorium for various reasons. A lot of libraries are having trouble staffing. We're rebuilding our staffing as well. There's budget issues. There is pretty much across the board, slow rebuilding of library programs and so forth. We certainly can attest to that too. But we're as busy as we can be, so we're getting more programs in. Our numbers are actually been very good. But there's still, we're probably at about 800 walk-in people a week when we were double that before the pandemic. We really don't want to do that right now. We're not ready. We've just got to rebuild everything. So we're actually in a pretty good place. But the hours are fine. In addition to summer, we don't do summer hours like most libraries do, so we're going to continue these hours. We also stay open on Saturday all summer. Most, a lot of libraries do not. So we're pretty good with that. The materials expansion to requirement is still in effect for the full year, so there's no moratorium on that. What that means for those of you who are new, when you look at the budget, we are required to have a certain amount in the budget. There's a, an algorithm, sort of a formula. Out of what our, it's called the TME, the Total Appropriated Municipal Income, out of that, we have to spend 15% on circulating materials. So for us, the next year, FY '23, that comes to about $100,000. And that's on books, museum passes, has to be circulating materials. There's sort of, I wouldn't call it petition, more like a letter of interest. I signed it as well because we can't, we can't pay for any programs out of that. And programs are expensive. They're as much of the library as books, and they are expensive. So we wrote a letter to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners asking them to consider, you know, maybe using 10% of that towards programs. I'm sure it'll be a while before we hear that. But a number of libraries did sign off on that, as did I. I really didn't get a chance to go back over all the programs that we've had, but we've had quite a few. Nutrition program, we actually had it twice, one for children, one for adults. The ice harvesting program was a big success, very, very interesting. Our toddler programs, we have ramped back up to those. We hold them, it's the same program twice a week because far too many for one, so we split it, and every week they're full to capacity. And they're bringing siblings. So this, today we had, we capped it at 12, but then there were, I think, 10 siblings. And then the moms come, and then the grandmothers come, and it's a awful lot of people in that one little room. So we run it twice, and they're both always full. So we're now kind of ramping up, hoping to get some going for the older kids. And school vacation is coming up, and summer reading program and so forth. As a sort of an example of, because we do a lot of literacy packets, we had shut down again during Valentine's Day, so we didn't do anything in-house. So we recorded stories and we put together the literacy packets. We had 97 requests in four days for literacy packets. So people were still connected to the library, which is a good thing. And out of those four days, there were 107 webpage hits just to listen to the Valentine's stories. The Peace Thank You program is tomorrow. We just finished making some phone calls. They're divided into four sessions. All four of them have extensive waitlists. So we're calling everybody to confirm they still want to come because if they don't show, then somebody on the waitlist could have come. So far, one person found out she had to work, so she couldn't come. But everybody else is very eager to come, so. Upcoming programs, we have the Monarch Butterflies again. This is the fourth year. That's grant funded. So we actually get the Crystallis and have a program so they can take it home in a kit, and then they feed it the sugar water and then let it go at the appropriate time. It's always a little bit tricky to find out when the monarchs really want to emerge and to get, we don't want to have the program after they've already emerged. And if it's too soon, then it takes too long. So it's a little bit of a balancing act to get that. But that's also a good program. And we're doing some kites and some other ones as well. FY '23 budget is attached, so I can answer questions about that now during the report or we can do it later. Does anybody have anything? This has been, the process is that I write the budget and I meet with Julie and Ed, and we go over it, see if they approve it, want to make any changes. They were in favor of it, and then presented it to the Finance Committee, and they approved it as well. So obviously, the next step is to go to town meeting for approval. But this is the part where I always, you know, bring it to the board meeting so that you can see the budget.
The only question I have is in regard to any of the salaries. How much comes out of state aid for any of those salaries?
No, salaries are appropriations.
Okay, but there are, no salaries are enhanced through state aid?
Correct.
We used to.
Mine has additional $5,000 that comes out of state aid. But that's not.
But it doesn't affect any of the others?
Anybody have any questions about?
The other parts of it are just pretty standard.
I was just going to say, it's really, there's not a lot of wiggle room. Everything we need here, we really need. I would always like to have more program funding. When I came here, there wasn't any program funding, so I put in what I can. It's kind of a back and forth thing. But we do enhance program funding with cultural council grants and STEM grants, and a lot of it is paid through, state aid pays for a lot of programs. Other than that, the only real wiggle room is with salaries, and there's not a lot of wiggle room there either. I'm surprised you didn't mention it, Matt, that there's an Assistant Director position here this year that's funded, which meant that one of the other positions had to be funded as a part-time position for now because there's only so much. And to do that, a couple of other positions are, they weren't cut, but just not funded this year so that we could, you know, I could build it up there. And so down here, where you see the, the department request is $671,268. And we are required by the state to have $664,875 in our budget. So it's not, it's pretty tight, but that will meet our requirements.
Has everything been factored in for the renovations? I'm seeing 5,000 is roughly your grounds line at 5, 2, 4, 3, and then the supplies for that also being a little lower? Is that, anything with the big sunroom build?
No, those would come, some of it would come out of capital, but it's not, mostly it's pulled together from different resources. A lot of what Ed and Julie do. So everything here is operating costs, so that's.
Building, you know, anything we do in the building or, you know.
Does anybody have anything? So as I mentioned, I did hear back from the cultural council about five grants. I didn't hear the formal announcement. They said they would follow up with some, a formal notification. So I don't know if these grants were funded in full or not, so I'm not going to say what they are. I think I submitted eight or nine of them, and five of them were funded, but I don't know if they're funded in full or in part. So when I have an update on that, I'll provide that. The MBLC, I was able to get a small grant for some software for tracking reading logs, which might be a little bit easier. I'm not sure, but it's funded for a year so we can use it for the summer reading program tracking and so forth. And for our big program on Earth Day, Masterminds provided some of the printing for free for the T-shirts. We ordered a lot of T-shirts. We're doing a really big deal for the environment this year. And also working with DPW and Department of Development Inspection Services, that we met, three of us met in putting together a pretty big program. You probably read about it if you had a chance to read the newsletter section, so. Some of the partnerships we're working on, we're just finishing. Hopefully tomorrow we'll finish. Ended up being extensive. Bryn Mawr and Paccachog, it used to be that they would come to the library every year and have, we'd read stories and give them a tour of the children's room. They would get their library cards, and then they would choose a book. Obviously, they haven't been able to do that for two years. So I've been in touch with the reading specialists. And so we decided we would do something a little bit bigger. So we purchased some backpacks and has the library logo on there. And in the backpack were a lot of reading incentives. We put together a lot of those. Maybe you saw them if you heard about this.
She brought it home.
Yep. And so they sent pictures with all the kids in the backpacks, and they got their cards. And so it's really nice connection with the school kids for the library because they haven't been able to come as a group, but hopefully, hopefully next year. So anyway, that was, that was a pretty big project. I'd be meeting with the senior center director and the program director there. They contacted me about putting together a book club partnership. So I'll be meeting with them next week, and we'll see what that's going to look like. The Auburn Mall was still doing the story walk. We still get very favorable feedback on that one. They're also going to be doing some of our Earth Day promotions and help promote it at the Auburn Mall. And let's see. Staff, we have one to employ. She has not started yet, so I don't want to say too much. It's a full-time entry-level union position, so she will be starting next week. For technology, we added a staff picks, staff picks banner. It's now on our website. So we have it at five, or maybe we changed it to six so it would fit in the frame. Three adult books, some children's books, and a YA book. So just so that, you know, we read a lot and we see what people really like. And we've been wanting to do that for a while. So that's now on air, and that will be updated weekly, the same as the other banners. Little update on the Friends. So they have, they are no longer accepting donations. There is zero room, there's less than zero room in the garage. But they do have some oak sales scheduled. I don't have those dates in front of me, and I'm not sure if the Board of Selectmen signed off on them yet. So they're hoping to move everything out there. And it's just, there's a lot of good books. There's just, you know, just only so much room. So they're not, they're no longer collecting any really until further notice.
I'm sorry, Jean.
Yeah.
What is the role of the Board of Selectmen in signing off on?
It's, they need an open-air license permit to have a book sale outside, so that has to go through approval process. It's not, you know, it comes through me first, and I approve it. I had some questions. In fact, I had said we can't accommodate the rain dates. I had to look to see if it's going to compromise our parking if we have a program there. And I'm concerned about safety because of people are parking and, you know, coming in and out. And so they have to also put cones at the end because it's going to be kind of along the side with the back outside the garage. So I have to make sure I don't have a big program scheduled that day. There wouldn't be enough space, and safety would be a factor.
Great, thank you.
So that's all kind of taken care of.
Okay, great.
So the annual report, I also attached that. I don't think that's.
Do you have copies of that, Jean?
I didn't bring any print copies with me.
Okay, that's all right.
You can pick some up tomorrow if you want.
No, that's okay.
The newsletter I also provided to you. Museum pass update. So our museum pass program is a major, major program. And we didn't rush it. I know we've been wanting to get back in. There were still so many restrictions on museums, there still are on some. And so, you know, it's, it's not inexpensive to do. A lot of them have gone up on their prices, or the passes themselves don't have quite as much. But I'm really committed, you know, we saved our patrons over $30,000 in one year in entry fees by offering these passes. We, some towns sort of restrict them just to people in that town. We don't do that. We don't restrict to anybody. You have to have a valid card in the, in the system. And people are so grateful because anytime you can save some money, especially now with the price of gas and everything. So, but it's pretty major to rebuild this. So right now, we're sort of at phase 2.1, and I think we're up to 12 or 15. We eventually will get back to 47 to 50 because they were all, you know, I track them. They're, they're all good places to go. We're adding a couple of new ones this year. The Mass State Police, which they're not going to be moved into the new building until the summer at someplace in Grafton. And also adding the Willett Clock Museum and possibly the one in Webster. No, I'm drawing a blank on the, it's a mill museum, so. Drawing a blank on the name. I've reached out to them, I haven't heard back. So anyways, all of them are utilized, and that's major for us to update as well. There were days, all day long, we're taking phone calls and walk-ins for the passes. So, and those count under the circulating budget because they circulate. So that's money well spent. I think this is, this sort of, the hours just sort of relates to what I already said earlier. So I don't need to go over that again. The bill schedule, I don't, it's a pretty extensive bill schedule. And now that they, they have, you can send up a bill every week now instead of every other week. So there's more paperwork, and us trying to keep up with it, well, because it's a lot. So I don't know if you have any questions. Some of us have any with that.
Can I ask you questions related to, you talked about the partnerships with Auburn Public Schools at Bryn Mawr and Pacc, which that's wonderful. I'm really interested with the senior center book club. How did we reach out to them and like what?
They reached out to me.
Okay, great. And so is that, is that underway? It's just still in discussion?
No, we're meeting next week. We haven't even discussed it yet.
Okay, great.
So I'm not sure what they have, what they want. I'm not sure if I can accommodate any more than where we're at right now either. Probably, I will piggyback because we manage the book club in the library now. We get all the books for everybody. I wrote a website for it, and so we do all that. It's possible that they might want the same books, in which case that will make it a little easier for me because I'm usually the one that comes up with the titles. So, so it's still just, it hasn't even started to be a work in progress yet.
Okay, thank you.
And I have been in touch with some people at the high school and haven't had really a chance to really get into that either with some of the students. But definitely always have their radar up there.
I might have some questions on bill schedule, but I can't seem to bring that up on the screen here. And I did do a copy, so that's okay. I can do it next time, that's no problem.
Can I ask you? I have mine up. Is it, you mailed it out in the, is it attached here? Yeah, you're welcome to use it.
That's all right, Mary.
No, no, you can just tap and it expands, no?
That's okay, thanks.
Do you remember what it was, Matt?
No, it was, it was no big deal.
A lot of this is museum.
It was just informational.
Yeah.
That was the most interesting part for me was just seeing the cost of the museum passes, both the, in total, but also the, the variety based on the different institutions.
The real question is, is Dave's favorite back up and running? He likes the wartime. I can't, I always think of the, but he loves that one. He has it all the time. And I was like, is that on the list?
It's on the list. Yeah, we actually were the first ones to request a museum pass from them. They said, oh.
We want to do it.
I said, yes, we want you on the roster. We've done that with a couple of them. In fact, I have to create a pass for Willett Clock Museum because they hadn't done that before. And I said, you know, we'd like to have you. So, I like with the Clara Barton one, so I designed it because they didn't really have that on their, on their radar. So it's a good use of library funds. And I think that's all I have.
So do you have some questions?
Mary, do we want to talk about the policy for that Bulletin Board stuff?
Yeah, please.
Is that good?
Do you want to take that lead?
Yeah, I only, the only thing that I had a question about was the post was larger than eight and a half by 11. I was thinking, if you have two of those, that takes care of the Bulletin Boards.
Well, then we just sort of layer them. That's all we can do.
I wouldn't even mind if it was less than that, if you wanted to do that or thought it was necessary to make it smaller than that.
The postings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we could see how it goes.
Yeah.
There's, you know, the book club, the Friends books are in the center there. And on either side is a tiny little space. So there's one side for the library and for town postings that we have to have, and then the other side is.
Now, I was a little bit concerned about the two weeks, but the way you said that later on, if there was a space issue, you could remove it. So I think it covers everything. I don't have any trouble unless people would not, don't want to. I'm ready to make a.
Could I step back just a moment? And again, partially as a new person, and this is for you, Jean, and for others on the board, just in terms of the role of the Board of Trustees in setting policies. And I noted, you know, that the language here has this, was affirmed by the Board of Library Trustees and approved. If that was for just the XXX, was for a date or for somebody else. I guess it's just, on this issue of figuring out where the lines are between the library administration and the Board, how do we determine that the Bulletin Board policy is something that is a Board of Trustees decision versus this is something within the prerogative of the library administration? And I welcome thoughts from others.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think, I don't know that it's ever really been determined that. Julie and I say all the time, what can the Board do? Like, we want to give, you know, and this was one that seemed to make sense. Overall, Julie has authority over everything that goes on in a building, in the building. So if you wanted something in there that really was, you know, something that she didn't feel she could sign off on, that would come under building. And, and it's, you know, it should be a collaborative thing. So because it's, you know, a lot of it has to be discretionary on my part, so I certainly don't have a problem with the Board weighing in on this. I think that's a good thing for, you know, patrons to see, you know, that's a Board policy because sometimes you do get, it's always kind of good to have a backup, but it doesn't really rise to the level of the town manager. So I, I don't know that it was ever listed specifically. Matt, maybe you have some input on that?
That's one of the few things in the charter that remained is that the Board of Trustees does policies for the library. And then, it does occasionally get in conflict or could get in conflict with operational issues, but that's not what's happened. We've had collection policies and policies in the children's room and things like that.
Even just like the checking out of computers or who's using them, like any policy-based piece we put forward. I know time is elusive these days, but maybe a year ago it was? We did the diversity and inclusion policy. It's potentially still pending if I'm not recalling it. Select whoever's sitting to make a decision or something on that end. But there was, any policy related to it, we.
So if we call something a policy, then the assumption is that that's a Board decision?
That is how it's been written to us in many realms. There, as Matt just said though, there are things that could potentially be in conflict with operational, which becomes the conundrum of the setup. But for the most part, you are correct.
And is there, is there a repository somewhere of here are all the policies which exist for libraries?
Well, a few years ago, I gathered all of those up that had been here for a long time and presented all of those to the Board. A lot of them really weren't even necessary anymore. And I think that at that point, we started to go through them. A lot of them aren't necessary. I mean, you know, nobody needs that many policies. And so I think that we did sort of, I don't remember.
We called them all. They should be on the web, your webpage. You went through every one from many meetings.
Several of them on there. The Merry Moon policy is certainly one that Board.
Behavioral policy is on there, I believe.
The children's room policy.
Computer loan technology policy was.
Some of those have overlapped with the IT requirements and the CWMars network policy, which we didn't see that. So as long as they're not operational in nature. So there are, they're on the website, and I don't recall if we had any others that we were working on. I think this one, well, you know, the bulletin board, but.
The diversity and age are the newest ones. I would echo that comment though about the size. I would, I would narrow that down just so you could potentially have more community posting. I know, I know it's written to say nothing larger than a sheet of paper, so that, that does help, but it might be better to say posting should be between X and X and give yourself almost like a half page, just so there's more opportunity if you do have them and you're able then to share more information. That might be my only suggestion, but that's minor because it's not really changing what you have written here. That's an option.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this policy. And if you want to leave that eight and a half by 11, then that's okay. If you want to make that smaller, that's okay too. But you still have discretion to whatever you want to do.
Right, right, as long as that's in there and then.
The way it's written, it doesn't prevent you from saying we want them to be smaller, but if you wanted to put something related to, we encourage more smaller.
Some places come with, you know, big posters, you can't do that. That's kind of why I even put that in there. So I think they don't have a problem. Usually they don't, it's not a very big spot. It's not like the town citizens are like running to the library to post everything. It's not a very big spot. So we had to layer them or maybe even layer them and then re-layer them so the one underneath gets on top. I don't have a problem with doing that. And if it becomes a problem, then there is my discretion to, you know, either make an adjustment, so I guess we could see how it goes.
I'd make a motion to accept this draft policy.
And we'll second it. Any other discussion?
Um, I guess I just have one question. So before, so do you want this here affirmed and approved? We had done that before.
Yes.
What is the meaning of affirm though in this context?
Matt was the one who wanted to add this one.
Just that the Board of Trustees has voted on it and agreed to it.
And I think you could look at the affirmed piece as if we made a change. So like if Jean comes back and says, we do need to resize this, we need to adjust it, we're approving the updated version, but we affirmed the concept in the overall policy at that timeframe.
So as of today for both dates, so I will, I'll reformat it. I will post it this week and I'll send the final copy to everybody and it'll be on the website.
Shall we go on?
I was just gonna say that. I was just waiting for Jean to finish. You were interrupted so many times because of technology that I did not want to superimpose. Are you, are you finished?
I, I thought before we took the vote, we should talk about whether you want it to be affirmed, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is you have a, is there a concern with the word?
No, just, again, words have meanings. And it's not one that I'm used to seeing. So I was wondering what in the context, the meaning was or the intent was.
Any other discussion before a vote? Okay, roll call. When I, when I call your name, please respond if you are affirmative or not. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Suzette Dowd is absent. Mr. Jennifer Shea?
Yes.
Erica Brishzaker?
Yes.
Of course, yeah, I agree. John, John Dan, Dan, how do you say it?
John.
John, I want to say Dan Millowitz. I want to say.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I take pride in saying people's names correctly, but I've never managed yours yet. Okay, the next few things on the item, the next items, we have just three more pieces. The dedication of the APL renovation discussion that was taped, had taken place on March 14th. I wanted to give the Board an opportunity, if you want to, if you want to discuss anything about that meeting or the, the process, I wanted to leave an open space.
Well, I guess I, I've seen that the Board of Selectmen, you know, has promulgated that and has, I think, sought volunteers from the community. Have we been approached formally to nominate somebody to be on that committee?
No.
Was, I thought that that was the intent. I don't know if that.
I think that we, we, they invited us to come in and speak about the matter.
But not necessarily to formally have a role in that?
Right.
Okay.
And I simply read off Suzette Dowd, prepared suggestions just for the spirit of the meeting of the discussion, but we weren't, we weren't technically approached about, about naming. I think at the meeting, we agreed that there was no rush and that there should be more open discussion about it.
Yeah, I think they decided to do it in the May 23rd meeting.
Okay.
I plan as a resident of the community to write with a nomination for naming that building. I don't know whether the Board's interested in doing anything, but I'm, I'm going to make that nomination that I discussed at that meeting. I, I went over the list of trustees for the past 30 years. And I just found that there's one consistent thing that goes through that, and there's such a commitment. And rather than looking at any individual name, but to talk about the strength of the team or the group was much more important to me. So that's what I'm going to do personally, but I don't know what the, if the Board wants to do something, that's a different story. I'll be glad to help whoever else.
Any other discussion on that?
I think that they had said they were going to, in the next meeting, talk about constructing a committee, and maybe I misunderstood, my brain's a little foggy. But that's sort of, you know, kind of, that there had been a proposal to have a member of the trustees, a member of the selectmen, and then drawing from the population. But again, I could be mistaken.
I think that's what they said.
But I, I think you were right that they, they were like, let's take this up again if there are going to be more nominations. And so I, I just, I think that that timeline was moved later.
I believe they've gone out to seek members for the committee. So I think that that process is on the way. So my question was, was whether or not we had been asked to nominate somebody for that committee. I don't think it's critical that we, we do, but if we were expected to produce a name, then we should determine who should represent the library board. But if not, so it might be worth clarifying with the Board of Selectmen what their expectations are.
Or someone just volunteers and is like, I'll be.
I would say it's definitely important because that's the whole purpose of having the invitation from them and the discussion because we weren't included in that piece. And this is in addition to the library, and we have a role in the library as elected officials. So I would beg to say that it is critical that we have a representative to be a part of that from the Board, to be there and engaged. And so I would say, or at the very least, asked to be engaged, and then a decision made from the Board to or not to be on that front.
I think they were pretty clear that they were going to invite someone from the Board of Trustees. I think so, but.
I wasn't there, so I'm not.
I haven't looked at that meeting, so I don't know.
But overall, I thought it was a very useful discussion. And I think, you know, Jean's initial getting the ball rolling was helpful in kind of generating this discussion. And I think where we ended up, which is, there may be multiple opportunities here to recognize a number of different contributions from a variety of people in different aspects of the project, I think is, is a useful one. Not to diminish the role of the papa's, but to broaden it. So I thought it was helpful and useful, and I think as the process goes forward, given that we have time, there should be other opportunities to weigh in. So, no, I thought it was a, it was a good outcome.
I did too. I have to say, I was extremely pleased with the Board of Selectmen for inviting us in, but I also appreciated the discussion and the fact that several members of the Board said, there's no rush on this. We can put the brakes on and get input from the community. I felt, I felt very supported in the sense, not just as a Board of Trustees chairperson, but as a community member, I would want to have a voice. And I felt like they, they very effectively, led by, you know, the chair, they very effectively slowed everything down and had their opinions, but were willing to, you know, be more inclusive in terms of those decisions. Does anyone want to nominate or volunteer to be that person in this meeting? It's on the agenda, so we could discuss it now, or we can't wait for an invitation from the Board of Selectmen?
Well, I'd wait to hear from them.
Okay. Do you agree? Very good. The next item on the agenda, I sent everybody a copy of a Board of Trustees survey. The specific, the specific subject was library hours. I know we had a little bit of disagreement in one of our last meetings about surveying the community, but I, I'm just concerned that we're elected officials and we haven't gotten any feedback directly from the community since we had our strategic plan. So this particular, when I sent it, I printed out just one hard copy because as I said to the Board, I just was away since Sunday. So I just got in right before the meeting. But basically, it's pretty cut and dry. It just asks for community input, whether they're satisfied with hours day by day or whether they would want any adjustments. And then the last question is just any comments or, so it's very easy Google form. It's something that very easily can be emailed to people. It takes probably a minute, minute and a half to fill out. But I thought it would be a wonderful way to get some feedback from the community.
I would separate the comment at the end to be, do you have any additional feedback on the hours and then general feedback? So it's potentially easier to disseminate information in the results, but then allows for those who may have strict feedback about the hours to be entered. But then if those who happen to choose to fill out the survey and think everything else is great, but want to talk about X, Y, and Z, they have a clear cut space to do that. So just differentiating that, that open text field at the end might be helpful.
So I would welcome Jean's views on this because I, I believe it is useful to solicit feedback from the community about services of the library. However, I'm not sure if it's most appropriate for the Board of Trustees to do that or for the library director. So I don't know what your thoughts are, Jean, in terms of how something like this could be most useful to, to you and, and the town manager in terms of making decisions about the library hours.
Okay, thank you. Well, one of the things that I, you know, I take a lot of research courses myself, and of course, one of the things you always want to consider first is, do you need a survey? So to me, at this point in time, you don't need a survey about hours because it kind of speaks to itself that people aren't coming in. You know, we do track even between six and seven, it's pretty much after six o'clock. You know, they're, it's pretty busy around five or six. And then after, between seven and eight, there, there's virtually nobody there. So I don't know who you would get to respond if they're not coming. That sort of is, it sort of tells you that right there. So I think that are, one of the things you always want to ask yourself is, do you need a survey? I think, Erica, at one point, you had mentioned something about over surveying people or, I forgot how you mentioned, how you said it.
I don't remember that.
So in, in addition, you know, the, be careful what you wish for. If you're putting something in there about should we open Sundays, that's a very big decision. There's budgets involved. That's like, if you get people say, yes, open Sunday, and then we say, well, sorry, we can't open Sunday because it's, it's a budget issue. So there's a lot of things to look at in terms of that. So in terms of hours, you know, I, I'd say if the Board wants to do it, then go ahead. I don't, I don't know that you'd get a big enough sample size either to make it worthwhile if people aren't coming in and they're probably not feeling really strong about library hours. Given that we're still coming out of two years of being shut down and, you know, ramped back up, and we're still coming back out of that, all libraries are. So I would say maybe you want to give it six months or a year and then, and then, and then see. I would expect by that time we will be opened again till eight o'clock. This isn't a permanent thing to be closed at seven. And we're going to stay open Thursday nights from seven to eight, even though .5 people come in. So my personal, thank you for asking, Board might have a different opinion. I don't see that it's necessary to do that, but if the Board feels strongly about it. We cannot give you email addresses, just so you know that. Any, any information in the, in the, in our system is private, so.
They could use QR codes though, in the library. You know, couldn't they do that? But, and actually, couldn't we ask them, and when they renew their library cards, if they're willing to allow us to contact them with their email? Because some libraries do that.
I feel very strongly that that's not something, I know some libraries actually share. You're not supposed to.
Why don't we share? They have, they get approval from the people.
Yeah, there's approval.
Well, then it's our survey and not your survey.
No, no, the approval is that you would share my kind of image. Just like if I filled out, like Shaw's wants to know if I really like 1% or 2% mill. Like, I'm saying, sure, you can certainly disseminate that because I opted in to fill out the survey and submit the piece and potentially get my $25 Shaw's gift card. Like, that is not who dictates who's running the survey. That is simply saying, you have agreed to do this by virtue of completing the rest of this piece. I think there are things that we can certainly take to your point of like, Sunday hours, you just run off of a budget. I think there are certain ways to, to phrase the description of what the survey is and to provide information so that that is clear. We're asking you, you know, do you like the fact that it's closed or not? It's not a guarantee, but you can make a decision. It's here. Also, the town has done numerous surveys solely via Facebook on the large issues such as the swimming pool feasibility study, which quite frankly, I would agree that Facebook is not the only means in which to reach out to people, but that is a prominent way in which the town did that, to assess that if people are interested in that. And they did ask an information, and by default, you're providing that because you want to provide information on your feedback. So there are ways to do that and clearly state what we're providing and requesting what we're getting from someone. So that is an option, but I think we could easily clarify some things to just say, we're just inquiring how you feel today. I would also root your point that maybe today is not the day you launch something because the pandemic is just at that bigger turning point where we are evolving, that it's worth discussing the options of what the optimal timing is to put something out. But I don't think it hurts anyone. And our role is to solicit feedback from the community, and our only real means besides this meeting, which may or may not have attendees behind us, is outreach this way and to utilize the town channels to reach out to the community as well as our own constituents and those that we, we may know who could provide feedback. So I think it's worth inquiring, not that it's going to take action, but just to have the information. Because best case slash worst case scenario is, it says, everything is perfect, we don't need to make a change, these are great things, and we're hearing positive reaffirmations about the hours, and we're saying we don't want to make changes. Like, that's, that's the piece to say, yes, we're doing the right piece, which is sometimes also a good reason to survey to make sure our assumptions are in fact accurate.
I just want to make two points and then just share a different point of view. First of all, the QR code is all set up so that we wouldn't need necessarily, it's a matter of being able to, to, you know, use the scanner on your phone, so we can do that. It's very easy. But the other thing is, even if we did utilize this survey and get survey results, all we are doing as a Board, which is what we're elected to do and appointed to do, is to bring the information about the community to the Board and to publicly, you know, share that information. So there's no, if Jean, as the library director decides that she hears the feedback but doesn't want to implement, she has that prerogative. I want to be very clear about that. We wouldn't be forcing anything. We'd be just bringing public opinion. But going to the point about people not coming to the library, I go to the library almost every weekend, but I go to Stirbridge because on Saturday, Stirbridge is open every Saturday from 10 to 5, and then it's open every Sunday from 11 to, 11 to 5 as well. So that's a big chunk of time. I don't go to Auburn because it's only open for three hours on Saturday and not on Sunday. So I just, I just want to be careful that we're not making an assumption that people are not coming to the library because they don't want to. Sometimes if there's not an option, I have to be honest, as a grad student, I can't concentrate for just three hours. If I'm in it, I'm in it all the way. I go at 11, I bring my lunch and my drink, and I just hunker down and I do my work. I live about a mile and a half from this library. I would love to have the opportunity to do that because I really don't concentrate well in my own house. But I just want to be very clear that just because we don't see something, it doesn't necessarily indicate something that's very obvious. I would go to, I would go to Auburn Library every weekend and stay for probably 20 hours over a weekend if I had that option, and I don't have that option, so I don't even go to the parking lot. So I just want to make that clear. But again, going back to John's point earlier, you made some really good points, John. Policy, as far as policy, we can, we can reach out to the community for input. That's, that's a function of our Board. We can bring that information that we learned to these meetings, but we cannot force library staff to change their hours, or we wouldn't even think to do that. It's really about what the needs of the community are. So I just want to clarify.
Part of our problem has been that we do so few surveys to get any measurable data that I think that's what's leading it. We've talked a lot about this. I saw for the first time the library doing a survey, a cool little survey on the use of the museum pass. That's the first time I've ever seen that in the last six years, where there was some kind of a survey like that. And I was happy to see that because I thought it's, it's getting some kind of feedback from people about what's important to them. from people about what's important to them. And in the strategic plan, what we tried to suggest in all the things that we laid out for tactics was that we would look for some measurable outcome and ways to get that. And I think in part, maybe what we're doing is to try to, in certain areas, just start collecting some data that might bring us some information that came out of the strategic plan that, at this point at least, there hasn't been much interest in doing that, so...
In this case, it's nothing ventured, nothing gained. If it does fail us, and we get an N of one or two out of that, it's like, we've made an effort to do something to make an outreach and to then adapt our pieces versus continually trying and talking about the same thing but not actually taking the action. So it doesn't hurt us to inquire and have that information and evaluate the successes of said experience.
Yeah, I guess for me, it's just being deliberate in what we're doing. So again, I totally get that as part of the strategic planning process, you want to solicit input from the community to inform the strategic plan. Totally get that. If we were discussing a policy that we were working on and we wanted to solicit input to help inform that policy, that would make sense to me. In this specific instance, though, I don't really see the value of a survey on library operating hours, since this is only potentially going to influence an operational decision, which is clearly, as you noted, outside our purview. So to me, this would be the case that if the library administration wanted or thought that they needed information from the community to inform decisions about operating hours, then they would be best placed to survey members in whatever way they saw most appropriate. So I think in this case, while it may be that the board's intent is simply to dip our toes in the water of trying to solicit input and that in itself might have some value, I don't see that this exercise itself would be worth the effort and could potentially lead to some confusion. Again, the expectations issue would be one that I would definitely be concerned about, that if we're asking people to provide input, people respond, and then nothing changes in the way that they may have wanted, then in a sense, we hurt ourselves the next time we go because people will say, "Well, last time they asked the survey, I took the time to answer. Nothing changed, so why do I bother?" So that would be my only concern about this specific one.
So I think you can add to this, but I do think that the fact that we're talking about hours is not to say, "Hours are wrong, hours are right", but it's to start with a baseline of an understanding of the patrons in a survey fashion. Because as Matt just stated, it's not something that's regularly done on any front, so we don't have a baseline. So at some point, we have to create a baseline in order to assess where things are going in that direction. I would certainly be in favor of enhancing and expanding the survey to ask additional questions so that it's not focused primarily on hours but about user experience, you know. What do you want to come for? I think Jean's piece about the website banner on the staff feedback is great. Like, do you want to see more of those things? Are there... We could expand that, but I think creating a baseline is the piece that we're looking for so that we can make sure we're not only soliciting but receiving and then trying to act on that information so that we could then, let's say, we can't do any of these things, respond in our annual report. In a town newsletter, there's a Board of Trustees paragraph potentially in the Auburn Library newsletter saying, "Here's what we've taken into feedback." But if we don't take the step to ask, we don't have the opportunity to then share any feedback on that front. And we're just assuming we know what we may or may not know. So I do think maybe the best approach then to take your feedback in and others' intention is to look at expanding the reach of what we're trying to engage on in questions so that we can get a good baseline and inquire from members of the community what's going on in a variety of areas.
Well said. Well said.
I'd be very happy if the library administration took the suggestions in that strategic plan and went ahead and did some measurable outcomes on things. I think it'd be great so the board doesn't have to try to find a way to understand what's happening with that. But unless that happens, then I understand why Mary has this one and there may be others along the way. And it's true, John, that the operational issues could raise some questions for people. But the fact of the matter is, when you don't do any surveying and you don't have the feedback, any measurable outcomes of what you're doing, that raises concerns, and I think we ought to be able to do that. And there shouldn't be any harm in doing it.
So do we want to table this as a continued discussion? Or does anyone want to suggest, you said additional, expand the survey, Jen, additional items that you want us to consider? Perhaps we could bring it up again at the May 4th meeting? Do people want to move ahead and vote on it?
If I could just add to Jen's point. I think if we were to expand the survey, I think it only makes sense if this is a collaborative effort with the library administration. I don't think that this can or should be a board-only initiative because then I think it inevitably sets up an adversarial relationship between the board and the administration. So I think, to me, this is something where a joint effort by the board or subcommittee to include the library administration and potentially others to come up with what's the most useful way of proceeding, to me, is the best possible outcome.
I hear you, John, but that's what we did with the annual plan and the strategic plan, and that only aggravated more, and it was a collaborative discussion with a paid consultant. I'm not to say that we don't want feedback, but I don't think we should keep pushing the can down the road.
I agree. Totally agree.
To your point, Mary, on your agenda, you list this as VOT surveys, community feedback about library hours, services, inclusivity, et cetera. I think just those two other pieces are points to start there. I think we could have a conversation in May about, you know, semantics of how it's worded, a better descriptor of the top piece, and make sure we're all fairly comfortable on that piece. But we've done these surveys before. We've hired people to do them and solicit outreach, and we've still had that component. And as part of the board purview, it is for us to solicit that feedback, and we have to take action to do that and not avoid doing it for concern that there may be perceptions or received interpretations that we are going against it. We just simply want to garner feedback. And quite frankly, we don't all know everyone who's in town, and this is another means to solicit that and have true data points that can come forth versus the qualitative data of who I talked to when I got my $25 gift card at Shaw's or whatever piece there. I do think that's worth it, but I think you're right, that we need to have a conversation. I would... Mary, you've put it together. I would suggest you start with making those edits, and we bring forth that for discussion in May to tab it. And a few additional questions would broaden the scope. Do you have feedback on the hours? It might actually be better than saying Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday through Sunday. Leave it more open-ended. Do you have feedback on better descriptor for services? Because I know Jean has got so many different things going on, from the library pieces to the programs, the different stuff. We want to be mindful that someone's not misinterpreting the word "services" to mean great programs that are happening versus what books are available. Because that could be easily misinterpreted by someone who's maybe not a regular patron, and that would be unfair to suggest that programs aren't good because they misinterpreted the word. But I think little things like that could easily do that and gives us just a starting point. And if it fails us, we can all acknowledge it failed us, and we can work to do something else. And if it helps us, great. If it's status quo, we're doing the right things.
Would you help Mary do that?
I can absolutely help Mary do that.
Well, it also gives us a sense of what we want to know.
Yeah, it's a baseline of information, where we're trying to just get inquiries about what's going on, not that it's going to make or break the processes, but it's helping us to shape our thought process for future endeavors.
My other concern, though, about doing this at this time is that... And again, this leads into a little bit of the next item. But yeah, the tenure of this board is coming to an end in May, and there's going to be significant turnover on the board. So a risk of starting something in May is that you start something, which then becomes the work of the next board to actually implement, and I'm not sure that that's the best way to proceed.
I don't think we should hold off just because the board's going to change. I think that that's fear-based in our mentality. We need to have a like, "We are here, and if people want to come in, great." And we may or may not fill those positions, and they could be stagnant for a period of time, and they may actually all fill so that come June, whatever date that is, meaning it's there. But we should be proactive. We shouldn't be delaying work because things are going to change.
Right. I agree. I agree. And I believe the first board was in 1895, but there's always been a changing of the guards. But I think what I'm looking for, to be completely honest with you, John, I don't feel that we do get information from the community that is anything other than just anecdotally... People talk to me a lot. The reason that we brought up inclusion was the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy and just conversations that we've had in the past about how welcome do people feel coming in? How specific area that is my first love is special education. How often do parents who have complicated children feel embraced in our public spaces? Not just our library, but in our public spaces. And I think feedback that I've gotten just chatting at the dog park or at my house or, you know, walking my dog brings my attention to the fact that I was elected to include the voice of Auburn people in how we proceed as a team, as a board. And I would like to have a very cooperative relationship with the library administration. We have made many attempts to do that, and we're a little bit in a stalemate. So that is why I really wanted to come up with something where we can get input. I just want to know how they feel. If the community feels that the library hours are fine, then so be it. We'll support that, and we just bring that information forward. But if people have other concerns, and I really appreciate what you brought up because there is a need to kind of expand and see how we need to plan moving forward. And we may not be members of the board in the next, you know, election cycle, or we may not be part of this team, but we're all people that are very committed to the community, and we may be parts of other teams. And I would like to know that my three years in this role have made some difference to make people feel that I'm listening to what they have to say. Maybe I can't do anything to help, but I can at least put out an opportunity for people to have a voice. So what I hear you saying is, and I thought that great information, that I will reach out to the Board of Selectment about the question that we had earlier about, you know, the process for sending or being invited to a meeting. I'll also bring up, you brought earlier, what's the status of the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy? I think that's a good email that I can write tonight. And I will try to expand this and reach out to people about whether or not we want to collaborate in our next meeting on other items to expand it a little bit. The last two points that I have on the agenda is, John, you had brought up a self-survey, so I wanted you to articulate what you feel that is, how we can generate that, perhaps for our next meeting. I wanted to hear what you have in mind.
Sure. And again, this is informed by my experience on other boards and other places and focus on board governance. And I think the best practice for boards is to not only set goals for the boards, but then to evaluate the board's performance, both individually, board members, and then the board as a whole, both towards, you know, how we kind of abide by the norms that we set for ourselves at the beginning, how we made progress on achieving our goals in the areas that we want to focus on. So again, I'm not necessarily proposing at this point that there be action because in a sense, I think it would be unfair, in a sense, to give a test to somebody who didn't know what was going to be on the test or what you were being graded on.
Yeah, totally agree.
So this was more informed by, I wasn't sure that we would have a meeting in May, so I didn't know if this would be the last meeting of this board. But it was more to kind of, to put down an idea that going forward, one thing that we may want to look at or the next board may want to look at. And I don't know the extent to which this has been done in the past, but to kind of have that normal cycle to the board year. You know, early goal-setting, norm-setting kind of exercises. At the same time, perhaps, officers are chosen, the schedule for meetings is set out. And then, you know, themes, benchmarks along the way. And just from the discussion tonight, and one thing that jumps out, for example, is policies. So, you know, having a policy committee or having a program to review on an annual basis a certain percentage of the policy so that you don't have too much time passed and somebody says, "Well, where are the policies?" So that's an ongoing thing. Strategic planning, absolutely. I mean, this has to be a living process. I mean, there's a cycle for strategic plans in terms of, initially, the strategic plan is written, then you have to evaluate progress towards meeting the goals, and then you get into a new drafting cycle. So I did a little bit of just, you know, Google research, and there were several interesting examples available online of board self-assessment tools, many for the nonprofit sector, some for other libraries. So it was more just to put out there that while it may not necessarily make sense to do it, at this point, to evaluate how the past year has gone, to kind of looking ahead to, you know, past May, this might be something we want to kind of incorporate as a best practice if it hasn't been done in the past. So I'd welcome any feedback on whether this is something the board has done previously.
That risks sounding like I'm constantly contradicting you, John. I would say that...
That's okay. Bring it on.
We do do it, but the Google work you probably did in this piece may show us as an anomaly because, again, we are very pigeonholed in what our flexibilities are. So even the strategic plan is not our strategic plan. We have no ability to evaluate and true assessment that those goals are being met. Yet, we wrote those goals and put them out and coordinated with and hired a consultant to draft those pieces. So we do do those pieces. Obviously, like the rest of the world and everything else the past two years have thrown a wrench in some of those efforts. But I would say that there is a semi-formal means in which the board has acted on those components in the past. Could it be more formalized? Sure. But I do think the way we are positioned as a board, vastly different from all other boards, does make for difficulty in that front because we don't have any say or sway in some of those actions. And again, time's loose, so I can't tell you when we reevaluated the policies. Yes, we could look at them again, but we spent a few meetings on them. They're pretty basic. Nothing is that dramatic. It's not like a whole new technology has come about that we need to completely reconfigure what those options are. They're pretty straightforward. But we did review them all. We did evaluate them. We did discuss nuances between things. And it might be the next piece again, because it's probably been a little bit of a ways that we've done that, but I would basically say that there's still a semi-formal process in place that we do work through and evaluate what we've accomplished, what we hope to accomplish. But the survey is kind of that next driver to us, saying, "How can we do more so we can then actually have more tangible data points to say we've done X, Y, and Z, and here are results from A, B, and C?"
That's very helpful. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any commentary? The last item before we move to the next meeting is questions for the library director. Any questions? No? Okay. Our next meeting, and this would be the last one, John. I think the election day is, I think, the 18th of May. So our last meeting, this particular board, is on May 4th. That'll be Wednesday, May 4th at 6:30. I would prefer this room if we have a hybrid model again so that we can have hopefully better technology. But so we give the option for people to meet virtually or to be present. And anything else before we adjourn? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second? Excellent. Very good. Thank you, everybody.